Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the November 12th School Board Meeting to Order at 6:00 PM. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Megan Archambeau, Melissa Bacon, Carmen Barsky, Suzanne Bauer excused, Mark Cardizano, Elizabeth Day, Michelle Felicetti, Anastasia Ferguson, Eric Garrison, Jody Lane here, Jennifer Mayo, Amy Morrison, Wes Finney, Adam Tangway, Judith Vasal, Dee Vigliotta, Zoe Anthony, Walker Vivian. We have a quorum with 15 directors present. Are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Nope.
Nope, no adjustments. Consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Public comment, do we have any public comment this evening? Hold on one second. Public comment provides opportunity to address the school board on any subject specific to our schools and educational matters, allowing members of the public affair an adequate opportunity to be heard and to provide information and opinion. The school board welcomes constructive comments that will help to understand the speaker's point of view and encourages comments focusing on the issue rather than comments that disparage or attack individuals or groups. We ask that you be respectful and honor rules of decorum. Speakers will not be permitted to make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language and disruptive individuals will forfeit their time to speak. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum speaking time of three minutes. If speakers do not complete their comments within the allotted three minutes, they may submit a written statement to the board. Written statements are also accepted from those who do not wish to speak publicly. Comments or discussion of matters involving individual students is not allowed and comments regarding staff members either by name or specifically identifiable position are not allowed. These are confidential matters which the school board is not permitted to hear in public session. We ask that each speaker begin by identifying themselves by name and town of residence. The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the school board to listen to the public and is not a time for debate or conversation. Should additional discussion regarding an issue be necessary, that can be added to a future agenda. So, thank you for joining us this evening and if you want to come right up to the podium and if you push that button on the right-hand side, I can turn that microphone on and I'll flip my hourglass and you can go ahead. There you go.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Lindsay Hawkins. I reside in Waterboro and I'm here on behalf of my son who played on the high school football team. I'm speaking here tonight because his pads were wrongfully taken by the school's athletic department and nearly a year later, this still hasn't been resolved. At the end of last year's football season in November of 2024, we received an email stating that all equipment had to be removed from the lockers. My son went in that Friday, but his pads were already gone. When I contacted the head coach, he said it was an oversight and assured us that these would be returned. Later, we were told the pads were sent for refurbishment or reconditioning and we would get them back by April 2025. That never happened. Recently, the athletic director claimed anything left behind or abandoned becomes school property. These were not abandoned. My son went in to get them within the required timeframe and they were gone. This situation has dragged on for a year now and at every step, I've been patient and cooperative. Tonight, I'm asking for the board to take action. Specifically, I'm requesting the return of my son's football pads, or if that's no longer possible, reimbursement for their value, a formal apology to my son and our family, and appropriate accountability for or disciplinary action for those responsible for this mishandling. No parent should have to spend nearly a year trying to recover property that was taken in error, especially when the facts have been acknowledged from the beginning. I'm asking for fairness, resolution, and for a better oversight to ensure this doesn't happen to another student or athlete. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? Next up for my board chair report, I just have a couple things, actually, no, I'm going to back that up and actually read the agenda. We're going to start off with recognitions and celebrations. So, Mr. Lawrence, if you want to come up and kick that off for us, that would be great. This is our athletics director, Danny Lawrence.
Good evening. I am the athletic director, Danny Lawrence. Thank you for taking the time to help us acknowledge a few of the many 451 athletes we had this fall. I would like to first start off by recognizing some of our coaches who are going to discuss our female soccer player for today. If we could have Matt Gould, our head girls coach, come up, Maria Buck, and Sophie Manning, as well as Emily Smigelski.
I am the head varsity girl soccer coach. I'm joined with Maria Buck, Sophia Manning, who are two assistants on the team, and Emily Smigelski, our starting goalkeeper. Today, we'd like to recognize a big achievement for any student athlete that they can get, which is the All-Conference Award. The All-Conference Award is a award that the SMAA, which is the Southern Maine Athletic Activities Association, votes on and where coaches in the league vote on the best student athletes in their given positions. This year, Emily Smigelski was voted second-team All-Conference and had a tied vote of two in between the goalie position and there were eight nominated goalies for this year. Emily Smigelski, oh wow, sorry. Emily getting voted second-team shows that all the other coaches in the league recognized her hard work and effort on the field. With Emily Smigelski, she had a total of 134 saves in the season with a saving percentage of 75% and averaged around 20 saves a game. When we're looking at those stats, it is very impressive on keeping the ball out of the net. She was peppered with shots and was asked to constantly make those saves again and again and again. Earning this award shows that the hard work and effort did not go unnoticed and Emily is well-deserving of it. Thank you for letting me, wow, thank you for letting me take your time and recognize a great achievement for one of our student athletes that have earned, definitely earned it.
Great, congratulations, Emily.
Starting with our theme of soccer, unfortunately, our men's head coach could not be here. In true fashion, he is hunting this week, so I couldn't even get ahold of him to get Sean's stats, which I know are incredibly impressive. So, I would like to call Sean Azera up. I'm up, Sean. Sean is our goalkeeper for men's soccer. I am not a soccer guy. I was a football coach for a while, but I leave every soccer game so impressed with this young man. The opposing teams leave our facilities going, hey, that's a really good goalkeeper because he is phenomenal to watch. He has been recognized as third-team All-Conference Honorable Mention, which is incredibly impressive for the 17 schools that we compete with and their soccer programs. So, the fact that he was in the mix and representing Massapeach High School was phenomenal. It's even more impressive because I think our record was not great and historically is not great. So, when we have individual athletes stand out even within that record and shine at these meetings with all of our league, it's very, very impressive. Sean is not only a fantastic keeper, he's also an amazing young man. He always is working with our younger athletes, so you'll see him, I actually posted a picture in one of our newsletters of Sean out there working with our JV goalkeeper before the JV matches. He's a great leader. He leads by example. He's always kind. If you missed him this fall, make sure you see him on the basketball court because he's also a varsity basketball player. He's also one of our outdoor track and field athletes. So, I'm very pleased that you guys took the time to recognize Sean Azera.
Perfect. Congratulations, Sean.
And lastly, I'd like to recognize Abigail Gilly, Abby Gilly. Abby was unable to make it. They have a family medical event today that they were unable to make it for, so I'm hoping that's going okay for them. But Abby had, went to Vermont, Thetford, Vermont this past weekend. She had qualified for New England Championships. In order to qualify for the New England Championships in cross-country, she had to be top 25 out of Class A, B, and C. So, that's very unique for a sport. Typically, we're either Class A or you're Class B and does Class B beat Class A? We don't ever know. In track and cross-country, you do know because we compare those times. So, Abigail was 10th overall in the Class A and she was 17th overall in Class A, B, and C, top 25 from the state of Maine, representing the state of Maine in Thetford, Vermont for New England Championships. She's had a fantastic career thus far. Her grandfather, her guardian, is also our new head indoor track and field coach. He's with us for Trail Blazers in the summer, cross-country, middle school indoor track, middle school outdoor track, outdoor track at the high school, and is all things track and field and cross-country. So, we're very excited that him and Abigail were successful this season and we're looking forward to seeing a little bit of speed from her this indoor season, which starts on Monday, so not much of a break for her. So, it's, I'm sorry I couldn't present it to her in front of you today. I'm sure all of you know Abby and if you don't, you'll see her posted all over for her successes here at Massapeach High School. So, once again, thank you very much for taking the time to recognize some of our student athletes. Great night.
Thanks, Danny.
Yes. Okay. No. There you go. There you go. Okay. No, that's what I did. All right. Moving on, couple things from my board chair report. I first wanted to welcome Megan Archambeau. She's our newest board member from Lyman, so welcome, Megan. We're happy to have you. She went through new school board, school board member orientation with Dr. Markey and I a couple weeks ago. She's on the policy committee, was at that meeting last week, so, and then kicking it off this, tonight with her first board meeting. I was going to give a brief overview of the MSMA Conference. I'm going to do it real quick. So, five board members, Walker, Dr. Markey, and Dr. Doyle, we went up to the conference and I know that we spoke about that a little bit last time, but I wanted to quickly go over for, I know that it's hard for everyone, not everyone can make it up there, but I would encourage you next fall, if you are able to attend the MSMA Conference, it really is very beneficial. You're collaborating with other board members, you get to meet other board chairs, board members, superintendents from all over the place, and there are representatives there from places like Drummond-Woodsom, you get to speak with them, and Busrite was up there, so I was checking them out. And so, we went through, Anastasia and I on Wednesday went up there a day early and attended the board chair workshop. So, any of you that are aspiring board chair and want to go up there next year for that, that was really great to sit in a room with board chairs and vice chairs and talk about real, you know, in-the-moment experiences that boards are having right now. Our only negative thought about that workshop was that it wasn't long enough. We could have used, you get us in a room, all board chairs are, like to talk, so, and we would have, I think we would have all sat there all day. But then, the board members that went up and Walker and Stephen Amanda, we attended a ton of clinics around, if, if there's anything that you're interested in when it comes to serving on the board, they have a clinic for it. So, we went to clinics on collective bargaining, board power and authority. There was a clinic about play for all, which was accessible play areas that Suzanne went to that she said was fantastic. There was a policy primer, that was Beth's favorite clinic. The legal year and review, there was a couple clinics regarding cellphone policies, how to implement them, what to do with them, and then my favorite, Robert's Rules of Order 101. So, for those of you who are available next fall, I highly encourage you to try and get, even if you can go up just for one day, so it's Thursday and Friday, Thursday is definitely the day, that's when all the vendors are there, where you could really speak to the representatives. So, if you're able to attend, we would love to see you up there because it really is quite an experience. Lastly, I am looking for a board volunteer to serve on the Everyone Graduates Committee. We've had two volunteers serving on that for the past several years. One of them is not able to anymore, so looking for somebody else to serve on that. They're going to start building their meeting schedule. Previous years, correct me if I'm wrong, they've been meeting on a weekday before school, like a 7:00, 7:30 meeting time, one day a month? Is that?
Yep.
Like a Wednesday morning? So, once a month. So, if you are interested in serving on that, just shoot me an email. I'd like to let Ty know by the end of the week so that they can start building their meeting schedule for the year. So, again, that's for the Everyone Graduates Committee. That's around policy, I'm going to spit out it, JCB, I want to say JCB, which is about graduation rates and, and all of that. So, if you're interested in that, please let me know. Jen?
The first one's going to be December 2nd and it's going to be Tuesdays this year.
Tuesdays?
And it's on like Google Meet, so you don't got to like, you just do it from home and...
Okay. I didn't know that, so thank you. So, Tuesday mornings, Google Meets. All right, perfect. Thanks, Jen. But unless there are any questions, that's all I have. I'll turn things over to Dr. Markey for the superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll begin with Zoe and Walker.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So, the recent edition of the Student Representative Report, we started by talking about Waterboro Elementary. They recently had a flannel and autumn colors themed Spirit Day. They've been, they'll be holding parent-teacher conferences during the week of November 13th and November 20th, and they'll have a Spirit Day upcoming with the theme of Sports Day. The school is focused on their character trait of gratitude this month, and on the November 15th, the school will be hosting their Holiday Fair. The school's Family Math Night last month had a focus of geometry and there were numerous hands-on activities and stations for students. They also collaborated with the Maine Department of Education, who made a special geometry station, and an MDOE specialist visited the school the next day. Chapley Memorial had a scholastic book fair during the final week of October. They also had a family night on October 30th with Halloween-themed STEM activities, the ability to shop at the book fair outside of school, and ice cream. The event had great turnout and the school's Veterans Day Assembly will be held on the 12th. Veterans within the school community are encouraged to attend. And the school will also be hosting an unannounced safety drill to help students and staff practice and engrain their safety routines. And students will be going outside for recess as long as the feels like temperature exceeds 15 degrees Fahrenheit and it is not raining, despite the colder weather. Pre-K students at Chapley had a fun activity where they were able to harvest pumpkins outside and decorate them and paint them inside the classrooms. Pre-K students and second graders had a field trip to the Stanford Performing Arts Center recently, and the PTC held a Boo Graham's fundraiser where families and students could purchase a Halloween treat for someone in the building, and those were due by October 27th and delivered on Halloween Day. Alfred will have a family bingo night on the 6th from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM, and snacks were able to purchase and prizes were awarded to the bingo winners. Candles that were sold in the Norway Candle fundraiser were able to be picked up after school on November 5th or during bingo night, and the fundraiser was able to raise well over $1,000 to support students at the school and the PTSA. Lyon Elementary is hosting a Thanksgiving food drive, which concluded on November 7th. They've been collecting numerous shelf-stable items to assist families in their community. The book fair at the school will be running from the 12th to the 14th of November, and the cafeteria was recently transformed into Willy Wonka's Chocolate Factory with numerous staff members dressed in Wonka attire. Families have been encouraged to check the overflowing lost and found bin before all items were donated on the 7th of November. At Lyman, there was, there will be a Veterans Day Assembly on the 14th, and on the 20th, there'll be a family STEM night. The book fair will be held the week that begins on the 17th, and parent-teacher conferences began this week. 23 students were recently recognized for being the Model Mustangs during the month of October, and students selected as Model Mustangs participate in a special lunch to celebrate their achievement. Now, I'll turn it over to Zoe for the second half of our report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll start off a little bit about the, about Massapeach Middle School. They will have two buses running for their ski and snowboard club. Final payments for that club will be due in early December. And the cafeteria has introduced a few new items that students can purchase during the school day, including bottled water and Switch, which is a sparkling 100% juice drink. Eighth graders are completing clay animation short films in their art classes. Music production will be scoring films and students will be learning the ins and outs of those clay animations. From October 20th to the 24th, MMS had a penny war that raised money for disabled American veterans, and they will also be planting flags outside of the building, each flag representing a different hero. Winter One Sports Registration opened on October 27th, and that season will begin on November 17th, which will be, which is basketball and sideline cheering. The newest, and the newest inductees of Massapeach High School's National Honor Society were formally inducted on Thursday, November 6th, and NHS will also be hosting an annual, a sixth annual Ugly Sweater 4K on November 30th. They're seeking runners, walkers, donors, and sponsors. All those proceedings goes to raising, purchasing, okay. All those proceedings are raised to purchase holiday gifts for districts giving trees and supporting children. The MHS band gave performances of multiple songs to the students in the gym midday on Friday, Friday the 31st of August, and this was just to practice in front of an audience in preparation for their winter concert in December. Sanford Marching Band earned another gold medal this year. After earning five out of five stars, students from the band were accepted into the State Jazz Festival, which is one of the most competitive festivals in Maine, and MHS Band is hosting a mattress fundraiser on December 6th. The Relenty Project at MHS recently launched a mental health awareness campaign. Sticky notes containing myths and facts are all around the school, and they have had a coping skills wall in the cafeteria, as well as making stress balls during lunch. There's a variety of district ride outreach programs helping families with the upcoming holiday season. Many schools have annual gift, gift-giving trees, food drives, and community members with skills that like to share, teaching skills are being welcomed to join adult ed. Sherman's Bookstore has partnered with the district's launch of Thank a Teacher Buy a Book program, which is, teachers just have a list, a wish list of books, and people will be able to purchase from the wish list as a gift. Within the, within the week of November 3rd, this would be completing the first quarter, which means we're 25% through the school year, and as we go on, there will be more honoring veterans through assemblies and teachings, and students will be devoting time to understanding, learning, and appreciating their, their dedication, courage, and commitment that veterans have and what the flag means. As Thanksgiving and other holidays are approaching, there are lots of new activities and events and learning opportunities coming as we enter the second quarter of the school year. And that will record, that will conclude my report.
Fantastic job, both of you, once again. Question?
Just one, I'm intrigued by the MDOE specialist in math and the high-quality math instruction, not tonight, but certainly, to me, it's one of those things that we talked about, sharing with the board so we could really see and understand what best practices and high-quality instruction look like. So, I would love to see that at a future meeting. Great, thank you.
As you can see, there's a lot going on. I'm going to talk a little bit more about a couple of those points and share a few others. So, just over the last couple of weeks, it's been very busy around here. It's really a wonderful, anytime I get a chance to go into schools, I just feel quite honored with the opportunity. Some of the highlights over the past two weeks for me personally, that I think are relevant to the experience for students, on October 31st here in this building, there was a trick-or-treat event that was led by Mr. O'Connor and our special ed department and our Little Mustangs program, and then essentially all the various elementary programs in this building, where staff really supported our students, and it was, it couldn't have been cuter. So, I just want to applaud Mr. O'Connor and our entire Special Education Department for really enriching opportunity for those kids to experience something special. Last Thursday night, I had the honor and privilege to attend National Honor Society induction and under the direction of Walker as co-president and... as co-president and Bryn Bachara, as well as Ms. Stevenson, the facilitator, the coordinator, the lead mentor of National Honor Society. It was just really a wonderful evening, and it was, it was also extra special seeing Zoe Anthony inducted into National Honor Society last week. On the 7th, I spent the majority of the day at the middle school, visiting classrooms. Last week, I was in all of our schools, but in particular, the middle school visit was a little more sustained and with many, many highlights. But one that I wanted to share with you, because we really haven't had it in the past at this degree, was our new music educator that we moved from elementary-level band to the middle school because of all the complexity of doing elementary band in five schools with one individual with, it just was not really a sound, really planned for that program. So on the 7th last Friday, I was, had the good fortune of seeing Mr. Milano in, really Malazo, sorry, said it incorrectly. He was teaching 13 students how to play the guitar, and the kids were so tuned into him, and it was, it was quite nice to see kids with varying abilities. There was one student in particular that really understood the guitar and others that really wanted to. So, and he has a number of groups that he's teaching the guitar with, or two. So really just a wonderful hire for us. Today was an extra special day. If you ever get the opportunity to attend the Chapley Memorial School Veterans Day breakfast, our fifth graders really lead most of the event, but all students are engaged, and veterans come in, and Ms. Penny and her entire staff just do, in all my years in education, I've never seen it done so well, and, and I, you could just see the, the joy and the appreciation on the part of those that are being celebrated and honored. In particular, two highlights for me, we're watching the National Junior Honor Society, no, sorry, the National, the NJROTC, still have you on my mind, guys. The ROTC students doing colors under the direction of Captain Howell, and just, they did it quite well. And the cutest thing was our pre-K singing a song, and a couple kids, all of the students were singing very loudly, and a few, you could just hear them so distinctly, those four and five-year-olds, really primarily four-year-olds. Want to also share that tomorrow morning, myself, Mr. Walsh, Dr. Doyle, and Mr. Newton will be really showing some appreciation for our Transportation Department. We'll be heading down there in the morning to cook breakfast for them. And then next week, on the 20th and 21st, part of the new middle school redesign of Allied Arts, one of the programs is really about STEM education, and Mrs. Thorne is doing a tremendous job getting kids excited about engineering and design. So next week, they'll be working through the Blueprint Engineering Kits as part of a challenge to, and they'll be presenting, and I'll be joining them for it, designs for new rides under a kind of a program for Six Flags. So Ms. Thorne's doing a nice job. Because that program impacts all kids in the district when they go through, when I shared last week that at the conference, I won a $500 check, I'll be donating it to Mrs. Thorne's program to buy some, some needed supplies that would impact all kids that go through that program. Want to share three more quick points. Odyssey of the Mind, this district's had a rich history with Odyssey of the Mind that really has not been sustained in recent years. So due to a number of folks that really are passionate about it, we'll be re-implementing that. There's some work underway to do a pilot at Lyne School and getting the, some people engaged, and hopefully looking to expand that for, for students. We want to really, when we talk about education, we talk about really creating whole kids, right? It's about arts and athletics and community service, and as we expand our opportunities for kids, we all benefit. So that's underway. Also donations, recently, we've been doing food drives at all of our schools. It looks like the government shutdown is coming to a close, but that doesn't mean that there still isn't going to be need moving forward. So we've received some, many, many helping hands providing support to those that are currently in need. So I just want to commend all of our greater community for supporting those efforts. And back to the student report, the marching band, even though it's called the Sanford Marching Band, we have, I think, more kids in that band than, than Sanford does. So just want to put that out there that our students that are on that, in that group are really excelling. And then lastly, something that we'll be working with our administrators on, we're going to probably look to change that penny wars to just penny challenges, just more positive. So that concludes my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, next up, standing committees, policy. Beth?
We met last week, I think it was last week, and we are starting to wrap up the D-Policies, which are the finance policies. We have a few more for, on the next agenda, but they're kind of stragglers coming in in the end. We have one coming back tonight for a first read, and I will read an email from Colin. A little lengthy, but we'll get to that.
Surprise, surprise.
Right. We love you, Colin.
Just kidding.
And then next up, we'll, we'll start up with the E-Policies, which are my favorite, environmental health and safety. That's what I do for actual jobs, so excited for those. I'm going to bring all of those back for first reads, and, just kidding. And our next meeting is Wednesday, December 3rd.
Just so she can read them three times. Any questions for Beth on policy?
Finance, Wes.
Congrats on getting your college degree. Great job, Beth.
Done, done.
Finance has not met since the last meeting. We meet next on November 25th at 6:00 PM in this room. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Human Resources, Anastasia.
We have not met since the last meeting. Our next meeting is next Wednesday, the 19th, at 6:00 PM, right here.
We have no old business, so we will move on to new business. We have a first read of Policy DIDA. Beth?
So in your backup will be DIDA, and it is a finance policy. So one of the questions that came up while we were going through it was the change in the amount. So Colin had gone through this ahead of time, obviously, before, and in there, we kind of noted at the policy committee meeting that he raised the amount to, from $5,000 to $10,000. And so we asked that question ahead of time in case anybody wanted to know. And so I'm going to read his response back. So in Section A, I don't know if everybody has the policy open here, under, so at the very top, it changes from fixed assets to capital assets. And so his response to that was capital asset is the proper governmental accounting standards board, GASP, term, and this changed several years ago. So this change is to align with that terminology. And then further down, when we talk through C, he changed it from $5,000 to $10,000 on each of those. This will be lengthy, but sorry. GASP Statement Number 34 was effective in June of 2002. That standard requires depreciation of capital assets and establishment of a policy. In 2002, the threshold of $5,000 was adopted, and it has been at that level since RSU 57's policy. With 20-plus years since the implementation, a lot has changed, including costs of assets. In talking with our auditors, it was recommended that costs since have increased, and the administrative burden to track the assets has, have increased, that we should consider increasing the capitalization threshold. Many government entities and school districts have increased this threshold several times in 23 years, and we have not. For these reasons, we recommend changing to $10,000. This threshold was also reviewed and agreed upon with our auditors. So that is the reason for the increase. He also mentions, "This policy only affects the audit," this, love this sentence here, "this policy only affects the audited financial statements and does not impact the fund financial statements or affect how we present budgeted financial statements. Only the government-wide financial statements presented in the audit report." Thank you, Colin. "This change allows for us to be in alignment with government standards in an efficient manner." So if anybody has any more questions about the changes in it, or if you want any further clarification from Colin, let us know. He was going to be here tonight to explain it, but he sent his, his message instead. So if anybody has more questions about it, send them along, and we'll get it done before the second read.
All right, thanks. So first, before any questions or discussion, let's, I will look for a motion to accept the first read. Was that D? All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the first read. Is there any discussion? Jen?
No, I was just going to say, maybe in that first paragraph, to actually write out what the GA, GASP is, and then you could have, you know, the acronym and the rest of it, just for people who don't know.
Like everybody but Colin, yes. All right. Any other discussion on that? Right, all in favor of accepting the first read? So we'll bring that back. Policy meets on December 3rd, so we'll bring this back for the second read on the 10th. We have to do it within that eight-week timeframe spelled out in policy. We do not have an executive session this evening. Calendar announcements are at the bottom of your agenda. Quickly, before we adjourn, this is our only full school board meeting in November, so I wanted to take a moment to wish you all a Happy Thanksgiving, to you and your families, to our community, staff, and students out there. So enjoy that time off with the people that you love. And we are adjourned, 6:38 PM.